Hi, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you for being here. I'd like to call this meeting to order, meeting number 2025-0109R. Agenda item nine for first reading of ordinance 2025-001 regarding the adoption of a new impact fee program for fire, rescue, law enforcement, and parks and recreation facilities has been postponed to the January 23rd, 2025 commission meeting and will not be heard on tonight's agenda.
Tonight's wonderful music selection, "Magic" by Andy Grammer, was made by City Attorney Pyburn. At the next city commission meeting on January 23rd, 2025, the song selection will be made by City Manager Sheila Rose. We would like to remind everyone to please silence your mobile devices. To help with sound quality, please make sure you speak clearly and directly into your microphone and mute it when you're not speaking. If anyone is having trouble hearing at any point during the meeting, please raise your hand and someone will bring you an audio assistance device. Thank you.
City Clerk Kavanaugh, would you please call the role?
Commissioner Rydel.
Here.
Commissioner Wasserman.
Here.
Commissioner Brody.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rayly.
Good evening.
Mayor Welch.
Here.
City Manager Rose.
Here.
City Attorney Pyburn.
Here.
And if everyone would please rise, I ask you to join me in the pledge. And we will follow a moment of silence in memory of President Jimmy Carter. Thank you. May be seated.
This meeting is being conducted live with a physical quorum present. The material for today's meeting is available online at www.cococonetcreek.net. Anyone wishing to appeal any decision made will need a record of the proceedings and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim recording of the proceedings is made, including the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. The archive of this meeting may be requested from the city clerk or may be heard online at www.cococonetcreek.net. If you haven't already, please silence your mobile devices. If you must take a phone call, please excuse yourself and step outside. Respect and proper decorum will be maintained throughout the meeting. Vocal outbursts, jeering, cheering, or applause can impair the rights of others and derail the decision-making process. Members of the commission, city staff, and the public in attendance shall not make any political campaign statements, solicit for politically funded events, or discuss campaign-related issues for candidates at any public meetings.
All right, our first agenda item is a ceremony recognizing the promotions of police officers Amanda Cummings, Kennard Garvey, and Jason Thomas to Sergeant. We have our Chief of Police, Brad Hofer.
Good evening, Commissioners, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk. Tonight, yes, we promote three officers to the rank of Sergeant. This will conclude our promotions with our restructuring ever since Chief Aaronall left and we reorganized the department. So it's a great evening, and let's call Sergeant Cummings to the stage, please, where everyone can stare at her instead of me. I did want to note, before I begin speaking or reading her bio, I just wanted to let everyone know that Amanda Cummings scored first on the sergeant's exam. And this is by far the hardest thing any officer will do in this department, get promoted to Sergeant. So scoring first on the test is quite admirable, but it's not the first time she scored high. She scored high on the last sergeant's exam as well. So congratulations on that. Sergeant Amanda Cummings began her career with the Coconut Creek Police Department in August of 2018. Before transferring to our agency, Amanda served with the Gainesville Police Department for over eight years. Throughout her career, Sergeant Cummings has served in various roles in the agency and her prior agency, including street crimes unit, field training officer, burglary suppression unit, PBA FOP representative, and canine handler. Most notably, Sergeant Cummings achieved a first-place finish in the 2024 USPCA Region One Canine Competition. Amanda was the first female handler to ever achieve such a distinction in over 50 years of the organization. Sergeant Cummings and Canine Noble also achieved numerous distinctions nationally, including second place in obedience, fifth place in apprehension work, and a ninth-place overall ranking nationally. Sergeant Cummings -- somebody's upset over there. I think he's jealous. Sergeant Cummings is known for her dedication to mentorship, having guided numerous colleagues in her professional growth. Her leadership style can be described as a servant leader. She believes in fostering teamwork, integrity, and accountability, creating a positive and productive work environment. Sergeant Cummings believes her greatest accomplishment she has ever achieved is being a mom to her twins. Amanda loves spending time outside of work, just being a mom, and enjoying time with family and the people she loves. Here to support Sergeant Cummings are her twins and her mom and dad, Steve and Nancy Cummings. So Amanda is going to be pinned tonight by her twins, so come on up, guys. So would Amanda's family like to come up and get a couple of pictures with her? Don't anybody move quickly. Don't run. That could be bad, real quick. Would you stay up there? Stay up there. Commission, would you like to take a picture with Amanda and her family? That's a good picture. Okay, next up is Sergeant Kennard Garvey. Come on up. So what I wanted to mention about Kennard, at the rank of an officer about a year or two ago, he did such a good job on our recruitment team that we actually made him a supervisor of the recruitment team. And, and... He didn't just do a good job, the majority of the folks that Kennard recruited, some of them had a hard time getting ready to pass the physical agility test. On his own time, he trained them to pass the test. Sergeant Kennard Garvey began his career with the Sunrise Police Department in the mid 2000s as a member of the Citizen Volunteer Patrol. Shortly after, he advanced to the role of Police Service Aid. After several years of applying to various agencies, both in and out of the state, Sergeant Garvey decided to sponsor himself at the Palm Beach State College. He was then hired by the Coconut Creek Police Department, where he currently serves as patrol officer, field training officer, and team leader for the recruitment team. Sergeant Garvey holds an associate's degree in electronic engineering technology and is currently working toward completing his bachelor of science degree. A dedicated fitness enthusiast, Sergeant Garvey prioritizes physical and mental health and enjoys helping others get in shape and maintain a mindful approach to well-being. Sergeant Garvey also trains and mentors individuals aspiring to work in law enforcement, both within the Coconut Creek Police Department and at other agencies. He has supported many individuals in starting careers in local and federal law enforcement. In his spare time, Sergeant Garvey enjoys spending time with his children and family, working out, and helping others achieve their fitness goals. Here to support Sergeant Garvey are his dad and stepmother, Phil Burton Durett, his mother, Yvette, his wife, Crystal, his three children, his brother, Kenrick, his brother, Kadre, his sisters, Kanesha, Rolanda, and Sharika, his niece... Wait, I'm not done. I'm not done. Kalen, I didn't forget you, Kalen. They just interrupted, and his niece, Kalen, and many friends. So Kennard is going to be pinned tonight by his dad with the help of one of his daughters. So if you guys want to come on up? And it should be noted that Kennard scored second highest in the sergeant's exam. Take your time, don't worry, nobody's watching. Good job, good job. Friends and family want to come up and take a picture? That's all right, yes, of course, we got room for you. The whole entourage. Kennard's family, just stay up there for a sec. Commissioners, you want to join Kennard and his family for one photo, please? Kennard, you bring your own photographer? Come on, bud. And next is Sergeant Jason Thomas.
Yes, sir.
Jason's a military man, so we expect order and discipline from the troops moving forward. Okay. Sergeant Jason Thomas began his journey of selfless service at the age of 27 when he enlisted in the U.S. Army in 2003. Over the course of his military career, Sergeant Thomas served seven years on active duty with multiple overseas deployments, including Iraq in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom and Stateside at Fort Bliss, Texas, in support of Operation Enduring Freedom. With 21 years of dedicated service, Sergeant Thomas was recently promoted to the rank of Lieutenant Colonel in the Army Reserves, a testament to his leadership, commitment, and expertise. He has earned numerous military honors, including two Army Commendation Medals and the prestigious Meritorious Service Medal. In 2013, Sergeant Thomas transitioned to a career in law enforcement, joining the Coconut Creek Police Department. Over the years, he has held key positions, including field training officer for eight years and a recruiter. He also played an integral role in the agency's initial successful accreditation with the Commission for Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation, or CFA, in 2018. Sergeant Thomas's dedication to service continues to shine as he now steps into the role of sergeant, ready to apply his wealth of leadership experience to benefit this agency and the community we serve. Here to support Sergeant Thomas are his wife, Allison, their three children, and his mother-in-law, Barbara. And tonight, Jason will be pinned by his wife, Allison. You want to come up? Kids, you can come up, too.
I just got to say, so my kids are coming up, too. I work with my co-partner, Amanda Cummings. She has twins. I also have twins, so there's something in the water.
And Jason scored third on the test. This is the first time in many years we went right down the list because we had excellent candidates that scored in order. And Commissioners? You good? Thank you. Now, it's customary for us to take a picture with all of CCPD, so if I could have the three candidates come back up and all sworn personnel from Coconut Creek, please come up and take a photo with the new sergeants.
And one is here. State Representative Honchowski reminded us that today is Law Enforcement Day, and so it's a reminder to all of you, we all want you to go home safe, just like you started work, that you go home safe at night or whenever your shift ends. Thank you for what you do. All right, our next agenda item is a presentation recognizing first-quarter employee milestone anniversaries for fiscal year 2025, and we have our HR Director Pam Kershaw that's going to help with the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. It's my honor to recognize a group of employees who have celebrated milestone years of service during the past quarter. A few of them are here tonight, so when I say your name, if you could raise your hand or raise your sign so we could recognize you, that would be great. This first group has celebrated five years of service, and two of them are here, so I'm going to point them out first. We have Police Officer Daniel Cross. And Police Officer Tara Johnson. The remaining five-year employees are Group Exercise Instructor David Volano, Police Officer Richard Cole, Police Officer Laurel Kayusa, Police Officer Christopher Keating, sorry, Maintenance Service Worker Two Ashook Balchan, Maintenance Service Worker Three Michael Calucci, Bus Driver Helena Kalkowska, and Utility Service Worker One Kelly Joseph. We had two employees celebrate 10 years of service, our Crime Scene Investigator Kena Pemberton, she could not make it tonight. And our newly-promoted Digital Evidence Administrator in the Police Department, Thomas Marullo. We have one employee who celebrated 15 years of service, and she's here, Parks and Recreation Supervisor Melissa C. And we had two employees celebrate 20 years of service, Police Record Specialist Mary Lee Zestarillo. She's not here. She couldn't make it tonight, but our next honoree is here, Police Sergeant Brian Mullen. Would those of you who are here, please kindly come up for a photo? We'd like a group photo. Please, thank you. We're going to go in order, yeah. There you go. Thank you all for your dedication to the city.
Vice Mayor Rayly.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'd like to request a point of personal privilege.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to address the delusional allegations made by my opponent at the last Coconut Creek Commission meeting pertaining to my role as a commissioner. These allegations are completely absurd and untrue. I would like to ask for a consensus from my commission to direct our city attorney to hire an independent third party to look into any allegations relating to my role as a commissioner. Just because allegations are constantly repeated doesn't make it true or factual. I welcome any and all inquiries. Commission?
City Attorney Pyburn.
If it is the will of the commission, certainly, then I can move forward with obtaining, or rather retaining, and hiring an independent consultant to look into the allegations against Vice Mayor Rayly.
All right, do we have a consensus from the commission?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
And so before we have the public input, I'd like to make a note as a result of Vice Mayor Rayly's request that if anyone, I haven't seen the list, but if anyone from the public has signed up to speak on the item that we have just made a consensus of action on, then I ask that you refrain because it will now be being addressed. We'll now go to input from the public. City Clerk Kavanaugh, is there anyone who has signed in to speak on non-agenda items or consent agenda items, and then also to carve out those that are intending to speak on an item that is going to be investigated further?
Yes, there are 11 individuals that signed up to speak on non-agenda items, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name.
Can I say something real quick? Before you, I just want clarity. I know we gave consensus for a, for an investig-- so, Terrell, can you just, for everybody here, please break it down as to what was just voted on and the next steps that are going to happen? I really appreciate that.
Sure, no problem. So obviously, I had been made aware of the allegations and had started to research the possibility of a third party to look into the matters, an independent third party. I would like to recommend that we would utilize Tom Lynch. He's a retired judge. He spent 32 years on the bench, both in county and circuit court. He is a certified mediator. He's also served on the Florida Supreme Court Judicial Ethics Advisory Committee and was a Supreme Court referee for the Florida Bar Grievances, meaning that he got to hear grievances against attorneys. He, I believe, has the experience necessary, understands the ethics laws, and would be my recommendation for looking into this matter. Aside from that, in speaking with him briefly, he did say that he could perform an investigation. He believed-- He believes that he could do it, you know, rather swiftly. That being said, you know, he's going to have to look at everything. And I would like to recommend also, just because I feel like I may be a little bit of a witness in this matter, I would like to recommend that the point person actually be Jeanette Camacho, our Public Safety Advisor, for her to coordinate with Judge Lynch instead of me, just to kind of remove me from the equation, because again, I've received letters and emails and attended meetings, and I think that would be a better way to proceed.
And to understand, this person will be getting paid, correct?
Yes, to the same extent as we would hire outside counsel, and outside counsel gets paid. I believe that his hourly rate is $550 an hour.
So when we, so when things like this, when we as a commission, right, investigate one of our own for potential accusations that any resident could make, we are not spending taxpayer dollars, okay, based upon, to investigate one of our commissioners for things she's done as city commissioner? Is that correct?
Correct. It would be limited to only any dealings, experiences, or any involvement that Vice Mayor Rayly had as a sitting commissioner of the City of Coconut Creek. It would not be looking into anything having to do with either her role as the president of the Windmore Condo Association, or anything outside of her role as a sitting commissioner in Coconut Creek.
Correct, because that's unapplicable to...
That's just not within our purview.
Got it. Okay. Vice Mayor, I think it's a lot of courage what you just did. I hope the investigation comes back well for you. I don't know what will happen, but obviously, if you're willing to do this, you have nothing to hide, and you have the support of the commission. And I hope that the people here know that the city is paying for this based upon allegations that have come down. That could be true or could be false. And we'll see what happens in the next hopefully 30 to 60 days. Thank you.
Could you clarify the timeline?
I spoke with Judge Lynch about the possibility of moving as swiftly as possible. He said that he believes that he could probably do it within 30 days based on his current schedule. That said, I mean, he couldn't guarantee anything, but that's what he was suggesting.
And outside counsel is often used in relation to another, any other city employee?
We use outside counsel for all types of things. Sometimes we use them due to investigations. Other times, we use them for issues of either competence, if it's a specific nuanced area of the law, for example, bond counsel or something like that, because there are certain SEC filings. Another reason why we might utilize outside counsel is if there's a conflict. In this case, I think that this, the allegations are serious enough, and we need to take them seriously. And using an outside attorney to independently look into this matter is prudent and appropriate. And again, it just removes us from the equation.
Thank you. All right, City Clerk Kavanaugh, if you would like to go ahead. Oh, sorry, sorry, Commissioner.
Thank you. I guess, Jackie, just because you asked for it, I'll acquiesce to it. I don't, I actually don't agree with us hiring somebody to do this, and I'll tell you why, but you asked for it, so I'll give consensus for it. There's governing bodies outside the city that specifically do this. I don't agree candidly, Terrell, and I'm not going to step on your toes. Jeanette shouldn't be the person running point. Candidly, your new Deputy Assistant City Attorney should be the one running point, because she's brand new and hasn't been here for anything. And some of these allegations have been made and insinuated with the police department. So using the police department's lawyer candidly, transparently, isn't appropriate. So if, I'll agree to this tonight, only because she asked for it, right? And I don't know, I appreciate you vetting a judge. I can tell you from experience, I'm an attorney. I've been in the courthouse 20-plus years. Tom Lynch has been engaged in investigations in the school board and other investigations, so I think you found a credible candidate. I give you credit for that. I don't think any lawyer in this town would question his ethics approach and his reputation. So I give you credit for that. There are agencies that do that, and the only, I'm going to be very clear, we went through this years ago. There's bodies that do these things, but I will agree to this tonight, because Commissioner Rayly asked for it. So I will do that, if that's with what's gone on globally and in the community. But that's my position, and I want to commend your approach. But I will say, just legally speaking, transparency speaking, the point of contact that should be relaying things to an investigator, and I'm not saying it in any way, but if you want full transparency, it should be the newest person in the city attorney's office that hasn't been around, that's new, that could just be the conduit of communication, as opposed, I understand you, candidly, Jeanette could be a witness. There's an aspect of that. So Ms. Harvey, candidly, should be the conduit to communicate to Judge Lynch. That's all I have.
And if I could just point out, part of the reason why I suggested Jeanette Camacho is because she spent time prior to coming to work here, she worked for the State Attorney's Office in the Public Corruption Unit. So she understands the nature of these types of investigations and could better address any questions that Judge Lynch may have.
I agree, and I have the utmost respect for our police legal advisor, but in the essence of just basic transparency, the person that should be communicating should be somebody that has had no engagement in this matter. That's all. So I'll defer, but I'm just saying that as the lawyer in me is saying it. But, you know, and we'll get to the bottom of it, but I think, you know...
I tend to, I tend to agree with Commissioner Idell. You don't want, when you do something like this, you don't want any inkling of a potential not transparency, even if it's a percent, less than a percent. So I would back that, just to make sure it's, you can't give anybody anything to say if you do things the proper way, getting the newest person.
Yeah, and the only thing I'll say to all the people here, I mean, our commission has resorted to a place of whether, whatever you feel, you know, I'd like to not have a meeting, and I apologize for this point of privilege, where there's disparaging going on, where there's comments about this, whether in support or again, it's just, this is a place that we're doing business for the best interest of the residents of Coconut Creek, and I understand people have issues, but let's try to conduct business here. You just witnessed an amazing night where we promoted three amazing police officers, and the first agenda item is one of our newly promoted sergeants. So I would just remind you of that, that this is a place of decorum and civility.
Well, I totally concur, and I was going to make those comments, but I do totally agree with exactly what you're saying. And this is now going to be addressed, one way or the other. So hopefully, we can have public input that relates to the business of the city and makes the most use of everyone's time. Do you have anything further to add?
I do. I want to say that whoever is involved in this investigation, I am happy to just put an end to this. This has been going on too long. There have been too many people involved. But I also want to say that at the last commission meeting, I sat here and was subjected to a lot of accusations and a lot of false statements. And I want to thank each and every one that came out to show support this evening. And I would ask respectfully for the opportunity to have our residents of Coconut Creek who actually listened to, or continue to listen to, the last commission meeting. So I would respectfully request that these people that gave up their evening this evening be at least heard or show the support for the other side of the argument. Thank you.
City Clerk Kavanaugh, would you please call the first person?
Yeah, so again, I apologize in advance if I mispronounce any names. I do my best up here. So the first person that signed up to speak this evening is Shane Moore.
I'm sorry, but we'll need to be respectful and just let the person come up to speak and have their time to speak, and we'll be respectful of each person's time at the podium. Thank you.
I feel I fall in the category of not wanting, not being here to speak, not you, not wanting anyone to speak, but at the last commission meeting, a resident said, "I'm resident of Coconut Creek. I live in Windmore. It's a Coconut Creek issue." And I respect the three minutes. Thank you. I'm here tonight to stand with Jackie Rayly and defend her reputation. I moved to Windmore in 2019, having grown up in Fort Lauderdale, finding a wonderful place to live and become active in many communities offered in Windmore. Then COVID came. It was at that time that I began to realize the management board of what the management board of Windmore does. At the helm was Jackie Rayly. The board is following state regulations, keeping us informed, providing vaccines to the residents of Windmore, and I'm sure saving a lot of pain and suffrage to residents as well as possibly saving lives. After the restrictions were lifted, a normal life returned. I decided to become more involved, becoming a building director, village president, village representative to the board directors, currently vice president of the management committee. I'm finishing my first year as the vice president and have been re-elected to a new term. I have enjoyed being a part of the program and learning the uniqueness that every community has in its work and progress. As the leadership of this committee, at the leadership of this committee is Jackie Rayly, and she has shown the tenacity, which is a requirement of all good leaders. Jackie does not back away from issues of controversy, just the opposite. Every decision is made with the best interest of Windmore, which I'm sure she does for the city of Coconut Creek as well. People have been trying to get everyone's attention throughout history by repeatedly claiming loudly and often how terrible something is, such as the ad stack calendar and the new century, both sure to bring an end to our world. Throughout the last two and a half years, Jackie has been publicly vilified on Facebook and with the spreading of rumors circulating within Windmore. These attacks were never backed up with any evidence, even though they claimed they have stacks of evidence to show as proof, the main proof seems to be only repeated statements how awful things seem to be. In addition to Jackie, almost the entire management team at Windmore has been named and maligned. It seems nothing is too much or too little to mention, including the accusations of collusion, corruption of all types, even to the families, staff, and elected officials of Windmore. Now this ranting is included, attending Coconut Creek city meetings to destroy Jackie. Having said earlier, I have just finished my first year of working beside Jackie and see nothing to support these accusations. She has nothing more than the goodwill and best interest of Windmore and Coconut Creek. People have been trying to get everyone's attention throughout history by repeatedly claiming loudly and often how terrible something is. As history has proved, these people were wrong.
Thank you. I was going to ask if there are others that would like to show a hand of support, hands of support for what the preceding speaker just spoke on?
Excuse me, the mayor has asked for decorum during these public comments. It's very important that we maintain that decorum. We have respect for the processes. And please, no more clapping after someone speaks, as excited as you might be. It is very important to maintain that decorum as we process these public comments. Thank you.
City Clerk?
Good evening. I'm Tara Stewart, a long-term resident of Coconut Creek and taxpayer here for over 20 years. Can you hear me now? Great. I'm Tara Stewart, a long-term resident of Coconut Creek and taxpayer for over 20 years here. As a former diplomat and served my country, I'm here today to put on record an attestation of character of Jackie Rayly. Knowing Jackie Rayly, I vouch for her character and actions. It isn't every day that an individual whose full commitment to her community and hard work fighting for each citizen's best interest is recognized by our Congressman Jared Moskowitz in the Congressional Record of the House of Representatives. Jackie Rayly's commitment to public service has greatly enriched the lives of her neighbors, and her continued leadership has strengthened the entire community. It is with pride to know one of our own has been given such an honor and formal acknowledgement for her contributions. Jackie Rayly has served our community and has made the shared success of our community possible. Dedication on her behalf has spanned over 15 years with honors. Having the interests of each citizen in mind and notable completion of projects that are a success is something that has been acknowledged and stands as a statement of solid character who represents us. Nothing has been said that can demonstrate differently. Completed projects under Jackie Rayly's leadership has enhanced our community. The honors that have been awarded to her, and we as citizens reap the benefits of these successes. It is highly admirable that Jackie Rayly has an unwavering commitment to continue serving our community. Jackie is only known for being an advocate for responsible governance, transparency, and responsiveness to the needs of the people. I can honestly say Jackie Rayly's efforts have enriched the lives of all of us who call Windmore and Coconut Creek home. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. As much as I personally appreciate this, please, let's not clap or show any outburst. Thank you.
City Clerk Kavanaugh?
And the next two speakers after Ronnie Sidney are Marvin Keith and Susan Wanderman.
Thank you, City Clerk.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the commission, staff, and members of the audience. My name is Ronnie Sidney. I'm a vice president at Windmore. I work under the leadership of our President Jackie Rayly. I did not intend to speak tonight, but when I heard what happened at your last December meeting, I felt that I had to do something to set the record straight. We meet with Jackie three, sometimes four mornings a week. Jackie is our leader. She is dedicated. She is devoted. There's a third one. And she is a diligent leader. She is dedicated to doing what's right for the city of Coconut Creek. She spends more time than anyone I know in carrying out the duties of her positions. She is diligent. She always looks at all the issues. She weighs them before she makes a decision. It is carefully calculated, carefully decided. You may not always agree with her, but she always has a very thoughtful reason for making the decisions that she does. She is diligent. She does her homework. I would put her meeting notes up against anyone's, including my own, which are not very good. I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to work with Jackie. And when I hear some of what is going on, it is really very hurtful, especially to those of us like you who know Jackie and know the wonderful leader she is. I hope that everyone will consider extending her term on the commissioners of Coconut Creek, because she certainly deserves it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Marvin Keith, followed by Susan Wanderman and Jack Hurley. The next speaker is Marvin Keith, followed by Susan Wanderman and Jack Hurley.
I too agree with every statement that's been made this evening about Jackie. I actually listened to the recording of the last meeting twice and wrote down all of the allegations. I can tell you that to the best of my ability, absolutely none of them are true. I'm surprised frankly, as the parliamentarian of Windmore, that you actually allowed this person to speak and make those allegations. I don't think it was city business, number one. You allowed her to speak for 12 minutes. These allegations became a video, which is on national television, which is a lot to have to overcome considering that none of it's true. Not only is it not city business, it was against a well-known volunteer with many years of accomplishments from someone who doesn't go to any commission meetings, Mount Trashmore meetings, Turnpike meetings. She's never done any of that. And she's making these allegations against Jackie. I'm not sure about the time extension, although there's a piece of paper that says this meeting does not allow extensions of time. And you allowed her three extensions for a total of 12 minutes. That does not seem to be within your rules. Finally, on the issue of decorum, decorum usually says that a person's name is not mentioned and that their motivations are not questioned. Both of those things happen. Jackie's name was mentioned many times and everything she's done has been questioned. That's not the decorum that I'm aware of. Thank you.
The next speaker that signed up to speak is Susan Wanderman, followed by Jack Hurley, and then Bettina Martins.
As you said, my name is Susan Wanderman. My parents lived in Coconut Creek for 20 years. My dad passed away. My mom came up to live with us and then she wanted to come back, so we bought a condo for her. She passed away. So then my husband and I said, "Well, you know what? We have the condo. Let's see if we like it." That was 20 years ago. Obviously, we loved it. So, like I said, the reason we love it is because of everyone up here. The buck passes with you guys, so does the good things. So, thank you for everything that you've done. I've been a substitute teacher here. I do rec stuff. I've used the paramedics. Everything in this city has been wonderful. And I just have two questions. I know you're changing your charter in March. I don't know if it's possible or if I'm legally out of whack here, but it seems that we have people running for office who have no skin in the game. They don't own anything. They are part-time residents and they're running legally. And I'm wondering if we can put something in the charter about who and how people run for the commission? That's number one. Number two, this is for the city attorney. I'm not sure if there's a scam going on, but people have been telling me there's a GoFundMe page in Windmore and that people are being asked to give money for, and then there's no record of it. Or I think it needs to be looked into, whether it's a scam or maybe it's legit. I don't know who's using this money and if it's being used for personal things. Again, though, I want to thank you all for everything you've done. I love this city. I love living here and the buck stops with you guys. So, thank you for everything you do.
The next speaker is Jack Hurley, followed by Bettina Martins, then Edwin Napolini.
Good evening. My name is Jack Hurley. I live at Windmore in Coconut Creek. I'd like to thank the mayor, vice mayor, city commissioners, city managers, the emergency services, and all government employees at Coconut Creek for everything they do to keep our streets safe and beautiful. My wife and I retired and moved to Windmore seven years ago full-time. Under Jackie Rayleigh's leadership, we feel we live in a paradise. We feel happy and we feel safe. We have visited many friends in South Florida condo associations. We clearly see Windmore and Coconut Creek are light years better in almost every way. I believe this paradise exists because of the tireless efforts of the city council and the Windmore council, working together for the citizens of Coconut Creek. I've known Jackie Rayleigh for several years as an honest, available, dependable, hard-working, tireless, knowledgeable leader who keeps our home a great place to live. Jackie is always available and attends many of the Windmore activities and many of the Coconut Creek city activities. You can see her everywhere. She's very visible and very available. My wife and I finished the butterfly run last year. There's Jackie at the finish line cheering everyone on. Next, Jackie along with the Coconut Creek executives was busy donning the race winners with their ribbons. At Windmore, we love Jackie and all the work she does for our community to make it a paradise we now call home. I came tonight to personally thank Jackie Rayleigh, my vice mayor, my Windmore council president, for all she does for us and all she does to keep all the residents of Coconut Creek happy and healthy. God bless you, Jackie, and God bless America. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bettina Martins, followed by Edward Napolini and Bob Boudreau.
Good evening. Commissioner Rayleigh continuously uses her preferred contractors and mocks and silences anyone who question her to the point of blatantly lying to discredit the company she does not want to use. We would allow a vice mayor who is in line to be a mayor to try and control your voices as she does in Windmore and silency and ignores the will of the people.
The next speaker is Edwin Napolini, followed by Bob Boudreau, then Filippa Sklar.
For the record, the name is Edwin Napolini. Good evening, elected officials. I stand before you to mention an issue that affects us all. It is known in the city of Coconut Creek that there is a serious issue of hiding structural defects in Windmore and your city engineering department has turned a blind eye or worse. I certainly hope it's not true, but it must be addressed. You do not need another champion tower disaster. Some structural repairs are done, not only without permits, but also using material that threatens the structural integrity of the buildings. You need the city engineers to investigate and file reports to you to find the truth of work being done, done incorrectly, or not being done at all. Commissioner Rayleigh hired a company to tell the residents that there was no issue with the expansion joints. The company she hired later admitted that they were only asked to inspect the good When they discovered the issue with the other buildings, they wrote letters that they refused to do any work in Windmore. There are elderly residents living with mold and leaks as a result of this negligence. The city needs to investigate to protect the health of these elderly residents. Commissioner Rayleigh has nothing to do to address this. If anything, she has hidden it. The issue at hand is one that affect our community severely. By addressing this concern, we can improve the quality of life for residents and ensure a safe, healthy environment for everyone. Thank you for listening. Happy New Year, and I yield my time.
Next speaker is Bob Boudreau, followed by Filippa Sklar, and then Ann Goldman.
This commission and all of the Coconut Creek residents need to know that Commissioner Jackie Rayleigh has falsely advertised in two local newspapers that the Broward County Police Benevolent Association has endorsed her campaign for the March 11th election, when in fact, they have not endorsed her. This is not an allegation. This is public information and is available on the PBA's Facebook page, which I have also verified today with the PBA that they have not endorsed her. Anyone who would advertise a false endorsement from any person or organization cannot be
Pardon me, I just want to make sure that, so, under our rules of decorum and under state law, we cannot talk about campaign issues in the city commission meeting.
I'm not campaigning. This is just a statement of fact. This is public information. I am not making a campaign speech at all.
But it's regarding a campaign, and that was already stated at the very beginning of the meeting, that it cannot be included in the public comment.
This is, this is not a campaign speech.
It's not a debate. He's speaking on something. He's done speaking about it. End it. Okay? End it.
Done. When we have the next speaker?
I don't understand.
You will not campaign matter. If you have something else to say besides the campaign matter, then you can finish your time.
It's not a campaign speech. It's just, it's public records. It's on the Facebook page.
City clerk Kavanaugh, please call the next speaker to the podium.
The next speaker.
I do have, I do have another issue.
I'm sorry, sir, then.
I do have another issue. You asked me if I have another issue.
You said you didn't have anything else to say, so.
I do have something else to say. A different issue.
But you said it was not about a campaign, so please.
It's not about the campaign.
All right, then, you can finish.
Okay.
But then, no more.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Commissioner Rayleigh?
No, no. I do, yes, please. No, I have something from the PBA that I'd like to address.
I think it's not a debate.
Not now? Okay.
Just check the Facebook page and you'll see if that is not an allegation. Okay, so Commissioner Rayleigh has stated multiple times that all charges have been dropped against her. This is not true. The charges she referred to was the Florida Ethics Commission who did not drop the charges. They were unable to do anything because it was not part of the jurisdiction. Commissioner Rayleigh and others, as well as Windmore, are under investigation by the Miami State Attorney. I trust this commission will review the facts and take the appropriate actions for the best interest of all Coconut Creek residents.
Please, thank.
The next person that signed up to speak is Filippa Sklar, followed by Ann Goldman.
I'm going to take her place. Instead of, we didn't sign up.
Quiet. We've called the next speaker. Let them speak and then.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Kurtz, and I'm here. Filippa gladly gave me her time, and I am appreciative, and I am appreciative. That's really an issue for you right now? It's recorded in the minutes. Tell me how that affects you if it is recorded in the minutes.
Just, just, please, please. Pardon me. We're trying to run a meeting here.
I'm sorry?
Now, if you have signed up, have you signed up? Because at the end, we will ask if anyone has not signed up that they're able to speak. Flip was the next.
All right. I did not sign up. I will sit here.
Can you note whether you are or you aren't speaking? All right. Then, are there any other speakers? City clerk Kavanaugh?
I felt it was important to speak today because at the last commission meeting, Filippa Sklar, a resident of Windmore, made serious allegations against Commissioner Jackie Rayleigh. This meeting was observed by all Coconut Creek residents, yet it appears only those from Windmore are aware of the inaccuracies in her claims. Filippa barely describes an incident and then manipulates the outcome to fit her narrative, leaving behind a trail of falsehoods. She has used social media as a platform to post malicious accusations against the board, the council, the board of directors, and Jackie Rayleigh consistently insisting they are hiding something. Furthermore, her private website requires membership approval, and if you express differing opinions, you are barred from her website. Her actions have caused turmoil during our meetings and have cost the community thousands of dollars in document requests related to Windmore. We must be cautious of this dangerous individual as she seems intent on causing further disruption in the city of Coconut Creek. Filippa's few followers have spoken poorly of Commissioner Rayleigh. However, the majority of Coconut Creek residents, including most from Windmore, seem to recognize the falsehoods of Ms. Sklar's statements. We need to be aware of the havoc she has already caused and the potential for more disturbances in our community. Let's stand together to support Commissioner Rayleigh. Stop Filippa Sklar's malicious vitriol. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes non agenda items.
Is there any other person that did not sign up? All right, come forward and then that will conclude the public input. Three minutes.
Thank you.
Would you, since you did not sign up, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Certainly. My name is Bonnie Shear Kurtz. I live at 1601 Abaco Drive, apartment M4 in Coconut Creek, and I want to thank all of you for giving me this time and for your time and service. And I want to thank Ms. Rayleigh herself for her continued time and service. Somebody posted on an opposite site because I disagree with you, Bonnie hates Jackie, which is not true because we have never met. I couldn't, I could not hate you. I don't know you. But I will say this, I was shocked, this being my first governmental meeting here in Florida, to see that you spent so much time with Jackie's fan club, allowing person after person to get up and describe all her attributes, which I'm sure are many. However, there are also many discrepancies and things that have been shown, and for every allegation that you think is made up, you should know that that website Filippa has put on the supporting documents for every single allegation that appears. Yes, she has. Please quiet the crowd. Thank you. Further, I was shocked to see that and also, you know, it was also interesting that I was able to come here this night when you honored your police staff and their accomplishments, and they seemed like incredible individuals, and we as residents of Coconut Creek are so lucky to have them, and I'm so glad they were recognized. It's interesting, though, with all those public servants, all those well-decorated policemen, women that you have on staff, that Ms. Rayleigh chose and the board backed her completely to. to hire somebody that had been on the police staff, that never achieved anything of those that were decorated tonight, and yet told us before, after the vote was cast, after it was done deal, after there was a contract signed, the most decorated cop in Coconut Creek that he was. However, he was the most admonished cop, but on the record, without conferring with anybody, without putting it to a vote, we hired your least, not only least decorated, your most disciplined cop got to come to Winmore. So, I'm just saying, there are issues of credibility, and we should not accuse people of making accusations that aren't valid without looking at the evidence. I have looked at the evidence, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. This is, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Agenda item three is a motion approving the minutes from previous city commission meetings, 2024-1212R. Agenda item four, Resolution 2025-001, a resolution declaring certain city-owned property as surplus and authorizing the city manager or designated to dispose of said property as described in the attached list. Agenda item five is a Resolution 2025-006, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designated to execute amendment number one to the special magistrate agreement with Richard L. Duty Esquire for professional municipal special magistrate services to include acting as a local hearing officer for adjudication of school zone speed detection system enforcement. Are there any items the commission wishes to pull?
Move consent.
Second.
All right, it was moved by Commissioner Rydell and seconded by Commissioner Wasserman. City Clerk Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Raely?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. Agenda item six is a Resolution 2025-008, is a resolution authorizing the city manager or designated to execute the attached agreement with Sergeant Amanda L. Cummings for the purchase of a K-9. Is there a motion and a second for item six?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Rydell and seconded by Commissioner Wasserman. And we have our chief back, and he's going to make the, the presentation.
Right, so this is, thank you, Mayor. The, the, the purchase of K-9 by Amanda Cummings, Sergeant Cummings, is not just customary, it's also traditional. When the dog reaches at least three years old, we cannot move that dog to a new handler, so, it's customary to, and, and the dog is bonded to the handler, so, in turn, that's, this is what we do, we retire the dog.
That was extremely clear when we had her promotion ceremony just earlier. Are there any questions or, or comments from the city commission? Other than accolades for Amanda Ann Noble?
Ann Noble's official retirement will be at a different commission meeting.
This does not diminish in any way what is happening here tonight with K-9 Noble, who has served Officer Cummings and our, our police department and city so well. Are there any, are there any members who signed up to speak or want to speak on this item?
No one signed up at this time, Mayor.
Then, City Clerk Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Raely?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. Next item is Agenda item seven, Resolution 2025-004, is a resolution appointing five electors of the city, one from each city district, to the charter review board for a term ending 120 days after appointment, pursuant to Section 907 of the city's charter. Is there a motion and a second for this item?
Move it.
Second.
That's moved by Commissioner Rydell and seconded by Commissioner Brody. City Clerk Kavanaugh, is there anyone who has signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, Mohammed Razib signed up to speak on this item.
I saw him here earlier, he may have had to leave. Seeing that, seeing that he is not available, Commissioner Rydell, who is your nominee for District E?
Craig Valvo.
Do we have a motion and a second for Commissioner Rydell's appointee?
Make a motion.
Second.
That would be moved by Commissioner Wasserman and seconded by Commissioner Brody. City Clerk Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Raely?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. That nominee will be added to the slate. Commissioner Wasserman, who is your nominee for District A?
John Album.
Do we have a motion and a second for Commissioner Wasserman's nominee?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who moved? Commissioner Raely and seconded by Commissioner Rydell. Is there any discussion on the nomination? City Clerk, would you please call the roll on the nominee?
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Raely?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. Commissioner Brody, who is your nominee for District D?
I'm nominating Alex Escoranza.
Is there a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Rydell and seconded by Commissioner Wasserman. City Clerk Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Raely?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. Vice Mayor Raely, who is your nominee?
Yes, I'd like to nominate David Mentis to represent District B.
All right, may I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Brody and seconded by Commissioner Wasserman. City Clerk Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Raely?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. Pass the gavel.
Mayor Welch, who is your nominee for District C?
It's Mohammed Razib.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay, moved. We'll take the roll. Mr. Kavanaugh, please.
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Raely?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes, just a moment.
Mayor, was there supposed to be discussion, were you supposed to ask for discussion on all of the selections? Or, because you just caused, you just called for discussion for my selection. I'm wondering why you didn't call for discussion for the other?
That was an oversight.
Okay, I just, I didn't.
Shall I go back?
No, I just wanted to know, I didn't understand, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was an oversight, I'm sorry about that. It has been an interesting evening. Well, that brought some levity. So now we will repeat the slate of board members and then ask for a motion and second. District A is Jonathan Album, District B, David Mentis, excuse me if I mispronounced. District C is Mohammed Razib, and District D, Alex Escoranza. District E, Craig Valvo.
Move the slate.
Second.
That was moved by Commissioner Rydell and seconded by Commissioner Wasserman. Now, City Clerk Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll on the slate of nominees?
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Raely?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. And I don't know, are any of the appointees here tonight? If so, raise your hand. We ask that the appointees come to the city clerk's area to receive your appointment letter, and then announce that the first meeting of the charter review board is scheduled for Tuesday, January 14, 2025, at 6:00 PM. January 14, 2025, at 6:00 PM. We have two, yes. We'll take a moment to let them come. Mr. Album, do you want to come and get your letter?
John, come on up.
Will he listen to you?
Mr. Valvo is at his, one of his son's last basketball games, so he was upset, he comes to a lot of our meetings.
I know, and Mr. Razib was here for quite some time, so I guess he had to leave, so I apologize for that. I've known this young man for, I've watched him grow up in our neighborhood for 20 years. He ran our streets, track, practicing for Monarch. Went to college, graduated, came back, brought his parents home, married, and has two children that he's raising, wants to be involved more in the community, so, he's doing just that. But all the applicants, we appreciate, and all of them were extremely qualified, so it's not an easy decision because this is a very important board. Item number eight is Resolution 2025-005, it's a resolution authorizing and directing the city attorney to pursue the city's legal rights and remedies by filing a lawsuit in opposition to the Florida's Turnpike Enterprises' expansion plan on Florida's Turnpike, State Road 91, from Atlantic Boulevard to Wiles Road under project number 406150-1, and Sawgrass Expressway from US 441 to Powerline Road under project numbers 437153-1 and 437224-1, and the Southwest 10th Street Connector under project numbers 415927-1 and 418214-1. Is there a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Rydell and seconded by Vice Mayor Raely. And we'll turn to our city attorney Pyburn for the report.
Thank you, I just wanted to mention, because I don't believe that the rate is on here, that Ralph DeMeo with Guild A Law, who is a shareholder, litigation shareholder in their Tallahassee firm, he is a very well-respected environmental lawyer and is also an adjunct professor at Florida State University with regards to environmental and administrative law. He charges $325 an hour. So with that, I would like your permission to initiate the lawsuit against Florida's Turnpike Enterprise and Florida Department of Transportation.
Commissioner Rydell, did you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you, I fully support this. Obviously, our city attorney has briefed us that this is something while we file suit, this isn't something a local news outlet wrote that this is going to bankrupt the city, this is going to do the farthest thing from that. What this is going to do is going to protect the, the, the lifestyle of a significant number of residents, the right to enjoy the property of when people bought their property and what it has, I fully support this. Our city has, our city attorney has indicated to me, and I'm sure has all of you in your agenda reviews, there's going to be updates throughout this process, and I fully support that. I think we all have been very on board with this, this is a consistent issue for the life, liberty, and property rights of Coconut Creek residents, I support it.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think whenever, whenever an institution or organization is, is starting to infringe upon our residents' quality of life, we as a commission have to come together to bring out as much armor and artillery as possible to defend our residents' rights and our quality of life. And doing this is one of those things, I'm, I've been opposed to the Turnpike expansion from the get-go. I've, you know, there have been discussions about, you know, compromise and this and that, and I will never stand for a compromise, I'll take it to the very end, and I think this is one of those things. And when you read these blogs, and to what Commissioner Rydell was saying, when you read these blogs, you know, there's so much more substance to things than what you read, and it's so important to, to come to our meetings, to engage with us, and see what we're trying to do, and I'm ready to rock, and let's do what we can to, to protect our residents and not let this happen, thank you.
Commissioner Brody?
Yeah, you know, the, when I read the article, I kind of was thought, did you, do you not know who our city attorney is? She's the most stringent person on her budgets that I've ever seen. She comes in constantly under her budget, so I'm not having any concern with, with this because I think in the, the reality, what we do is the quality of life is A, number one, and that's why we have the money, and that's why we set a budget aside for these kind of things, to fight these issues, because nobody wants the quality of life changing in their, while we're sitting. I'm going to tell you, we have a bunch of Winmore people right here, do you want to see traffic right next to your wall? Nobody wants to see that crap. I mean, absolutely not, this is ridiculous that they're even doing it. And I think, you know, Commissioner Wasserman had a right, we fight, fight, fight. We, we make sure that we take this all the way to the end.
Vice Mayor Raely?
Thank you. Yeah, we've been fighting this battle for quite a number of years, and it's, it's the quality of life, for the most part, for Winmore and for South Creek. Let's not forget South Creek, their beds vibrate now when trucks pass. When they, when it passes by their homes, that they're, they are that close to the Turnpike. Now, that's without the expansion, and for the residents that aren't aware, what is being proposed is an additional four lanes coming on the west side of that Turnpike, exclusively on the west side, not on the east side at all. So it, it impacts Coconut Creek. So I'm very pleased that the city is taking this stance, and we're getting aggressive on our fight to stop the expansion of the Turnpike, thank you.
And absolutely, and in addition to Sunshine Drive, townhomes that directly back up already so immediately close to the Turnpike as it is today, and all the residents of Winmore, in addition to that, just moving further up the, the Turnpike north, we have the apartments at Banyan Trails. We also have Tallowood Mobile Home Park, which today, they have, behind some of their mobile home parks, their back doors, literally looks like just feet between them and the Turnpike. I imagine four more lanes moving west right up against that little fence that they have there today. I can't even imagine what that must feel like. And SOS Villages, they too are immediately impacted. We've made some strides with the Turnpike, but it, it doesn't seem that they listen. That we will not stand for 10 lanes of expansion, eight is the most, and it should be continuous from Palm Beach County all the way down, no more than eight. It's bad enough that all of those lanes, as you said, Vice Mayor Raely, are on our side, Coconut Creek's side, not anyone else's city impacted, so. The city attorney very rarely offers or asks to have outside counsel. She prides herself in having all the intellect in her suite of attorneys within her own department, but she does utilize external sources of legal representation when absolutely needed, and this is one of those cases, so, fully support it. Are there any members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Is there someone that wishes to speak? If so, come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes in which to respond.
Good night, Mayor and Commissioners, I just want to ask.
Just state your name and address.
Felicia Schuman-Nukirk, I'm sorry, 5520 Lyons Road, Coconut Creek, Florida. I just want to ask one thing, with the Turnpike and the Highway Safety Patrolmen, have there been any type of compensation and relocation for those neighbors? Have the Highway Safety Patrol, uh, the Highway Safety Patrol Department, have they even offered any type of relocation or compensation so that those residents can move if they wanted to? Have there been any type of compromising with that issue pertaining that?
Any further comment?
No, I just wanted to know. No, I just wanted to know. If not, that should be one.
We will certainly have someone from staff will get with you offside.
Michael Rigetti is here, and I think he'll meet with you and explain what's happened with the relocation request.
To address your question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that did not sign up to speak that wishes to? All right, please come forward and your name and address, please.
Andrea Belido, 2601 Nassau Bend, Windmore, Coconut Creek. You may want to consider this as a reference. Many years ago, when Sawgrass, when they were building Sawgrass, I lived in Parkland, Pine Tree Estates, and if anybody knows anything about Pine Tree, they're very long, if you go down Hamburg Road, it's a straight road, and they're, they're long, straight streets. And Sawgrass came right, right down, right against those long, straight streets, and right against. So anybody that was at the end of those streets, it was, it was quite an abuse of, you know, of the traffic. So they had to build that wall. When you go down, you can see that wall, unfortunately, but it's true, walls do work. You might want to get some kind of a reference on how, you might get in touch with Parkland, because they have all the records, on how they went about getting with, how they did it, because it did work, and it worked fine, because those end, those end streets went so long that they had to cut, cut literally through the street to go and do that with the big, 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 big wall. And I don't know, it may, it may in some way help, you know, guide you on, you know, because, I mean, we all know that it's going to happen. The extension's going to happen. We all know that, yes, they proposed 10 lanes, they, or we all know that they over, that they knew they were going to come down, they were going, you know, they were going to bargain. So I don't know. It's, it's a guide, getting in touch with Parkland City Hall. They do have the, you know, the records. It may, you know, it was a major program, a major project, may help, it may help one way or another, I don't know. But we did it. We did it. We managed it, and we got through it, so.
All right. If there's nothing else from the commission, seeing none, City Clerk Kavanaugh, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rayly.
Yes.
Mayor Welch.
Yes. As noted in the beginning of the meeting, Agenda Item 9 for First Reading of Ordinance 2025-01 regarding the adoption of a new impact fee program has been postponed to the January 23, 2025 commission meeting. We are now going to consider a quasi-judicial item. Will the city attorney please explain the city's quasi-judicial procedures?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to remind everyone to please silence your mobile devices. Florida courts have determined that there are certain types of matters, including Agenda Item 10 on tonight's agenda, that are to be treated differently than other items considered by the commission. In these quasi-judicial applications, the commission is applying existing rules and policies to a factual situation and is therefore acting like a judge and jury do in a trial held in the courtroom. In such cases, the courts have decided that due process and fundamental fairness require that more formal procedures be followed. The city commission's decision must be based on the evidence and information that is presented at the public hearing, including the agenda materials, planning and zoning board recommendation, testimony presented at the public hearing, and the deliberations of the city commission. The quasi-judicial procedures require that the commission consider the evidence presented to it, base their decision on the applicable law, and primarily on credible evidence presented whether by staff, the applicant, or members of the public. In a quasi-judicial proceeding, the city commission is not allowed to take into consideration public sentiment or the popularity of a particular development proposal or application. The city commission may only consider competent substantial evidence. This means testimony or other evidence that a reasonable mind would accept as credible and adequate to support a conclusion. Florida courts have made it clear that mere generalized statements of opposition are to be disregarded, but fact-based testimony can be considered competent substantial evidence. This can include eyewitness observation testimony about relevant facts and documentary evidence, including photographs, aerials, and maps. Citizens who want to participate in a quasi-judicial hearing can testify as to factual matters in any element of the case that would not require specialized training or specific academic degrees. Their testimony will be considered, provided their testimony is backed up by established facts, studies, or evidence that is not conjecture or just based on a feeling. Quasi-judicial hearing process is not a popularity contest. The strict rules of evidence do not apply during the public hearing, but any comments must be relevant to the agenda item. Proper decorum is required and will be maintained at all times. Please refrain from vocal outbursts, jeering, cheering, or applause. Everyone who seeks to speak on an item will be given an opportunity to speak. If you intend to provide testimony as to any of the applications to be considered tonight, you will be sworn in before your testimony is taken. Please know if you speak, you may be subject to cross-examination. The city commission may comment or ask questions of persons addressing the commission at any time. If you refuse to either be cross-examined or to be sworn, your testimony will be considered in that context and given its due weight. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but may request that the commission direct questions on their behalf to the applicant or staff. Will the clerk please confirm compliance with the notice requirements?
The city has satisfied the legally required public notice for this public hearing for Agenda Item Number 10.
And will you please swear in all witnesses?
Will anyone wishing to speak on this quasi-judicial item, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
When you come forward to speak, please state your name and address clearly for the record, state whether or not you have been sworn in, and whether or not you understand the rules of the proceedings. Thank you.
We'll now hear Agenda Item 10, and after I read the resolution title, I'll ask for a motion and a second to move the item. Resolution 2024-164 is a resolution approving the site plan request of David Ald of John's Family Partners, L.L.P., to construct roadways, infrastructure, on-street parking, and other hardscape and streetscape elements for the property legally described in Exhibit A, attached hereto and made a part hereof generally described as the Main Street at Coconut Creek Development. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. Is there a motion and a second to move Item 10?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Rydel and seconded by Commissioner Brody.
Are there any disclosures such as outside communications or site visits on behalf of the commission for Item Number 10?
I met with Scott Backman by phone. Anyone else?
I had a coffee with him yesterday.
Yeah, every contact I've had with Backman is logged. Thank you.
Sounds good. Then we'll have our city staff, they'll make a presentation on Item 10.
Thank you, Mayor.
We've been waiting.
Justin Profit, Sustainable Development Director. I'm going to first introduce our staff here tonight. Newly promoted, Liz Aguiar, Assistant Director, sitting beside me here. Congratulations, Liz. And Michael Rigetti, our Senior Project Manager of Transportation Planning. You've already seen him in action already. The applicant, Scott Backman of Miskell Backman, L.L.P., on behalf of the owner, David Ald of John's Family Partnership Partners, L.L.P., is seeking site plan approval to construct the roadways, infrastructure, on-site parking, and other hardscape elements for the Main Street Coconut Creek Development. Main Street's roadways, site plan proposes to construct over three miles of new roadway segments and new roadways, including adding a new segment of Northwest 40th between 54th Avenue and Lyons Road, a new street called Northwest 48th. And by the way, when I say new street names, I'm just labeling what we're showing on here for reference, for tonight's purposes of discussion. Yeah. A new street called Northwest 48th Avenue between Northwest 40th and Cullum Road, a new street called Northwest 54th Terrace, that will be between Cullum and Wiles Road, and a new street called City Market Avenue between Northwest 40th and Sample, and completing the final segment of Banks Road connecting to Cullum. So, and all of those other streets will make up the, all of this, all of these many sheets that you see in the roadway site plan. On each of these streets, by the way, pedestrian network and amenities were given very high priority. City staff followed the principles of complete streets, which is a high priority of our transportation planning principles, and the Main Street design standards. You're going to see 12-foot multi-use pathways all along all of these streets, trees every two parking spaces versus the standard of 10 or 12, EV charging stations for on-street public parking, benches, paver crosswalks, and lighting, and more. The developer and the city's DRC worked very hard on this for well over a year, and there are many details that went into all of the designs here, and I want to applaud all of those involved in preparing this. Overall, staff finds that the roadway site plan complies with the adopted Main Street PMDD, that's the Plan Main Street Development District Regulations, the city's adopted Main Street Design Standards, the minimum site plan application review requirements, the city's Land Development Code, and of course, the comprehensive plan. Recommendation is for the city commission to approve the roadway site plan, subject to the two conditions in the agenda report. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And now the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening, and Happy New Year, and very happy to be back. Obviously, there was a slight delay on moving this application forward, but very happy that we are here and look forward to finishing up the approval and entitlement process and continuing to move Main Street into something that we can all be proud of. Just give me one moment to open up the presentation. All right, excellent. Yeah, Justin, thank you, appreciate the staff report. I think a lot of what you're going to see tonight, we've been talking about pieces of this master plan for quite some time. As I think you're all aware, there will also be a Greenways Master Plan coming before you shortly, hopefully in February or March. It's teed up and ready to move forward to public hearings. During, I think, one of our very first meetings on the PMDD, and then on some of our site plans, I think all of you started asking questions about, you know, the roads and the streetscapes, and during that process, collectively, the development team and staff said, you know, the right way probably to do this is through these master plans so that we can present everything to you at once. And so effectively, that's what you're seeing here this evening with regard to the roadways. As Justin just mentioned, we're going to be completing some streets and effectively creating a street grid that's going to connect Lyons to 441 and Wiles to Sample, and just create that opportunity for some streetway connections that don't currently exist in such a key area, central part of the city. Flip through these first few, you've seen them multiple times over and over again. I do want to key in on these couple here, though, just to, again, kind of restate and reiterate with our master zoning plan. You can see on this plan really how these streets lay out. I've got a few slides a little bit later that show that in a little bit more detail, and we'll really walk you all through the specifics of the roadways, the streetscapes, the on-street parking, all those various elements that Justin mentioned, and we spent a lot of time in this site plan review package, working on something that I'll highlight a little later in the presentation, for example, is traffic calming along Cullum Road. That was a lengthy discussion that we all worked very, very hard on to try and come up with the solution, given that you've got this stretch of roadway from Lyons until you hit a stopping point at that four-way intersection that you have there. And so that's something that we focus the details on as part of this plan that's being presented to you here this evening. And again, this next slide, which is kind of the master concept plan, just gives you the general idea and concept of what's ultimately been approved through the master plan, but each of the site plans that have come through so far have actually been less intense than the maximum density that's permitted on this plan. Okay. Oh, I was jumping into that. So, so just a quick reminder for everyone, in terms of where we are in the approval process, everything that's green has been approved. So there are three red blocks that have yet to be approved. Block eight is moving forward next month. Blocks 16 and 10 have always kind of lingered a little bit. We'll be talking a lot more about block 10, which is a multifamily block, as we move forward over the next couple of months, and then the roadway master plan and the green space master plan. The item highlighted in orange are effectively the roadways in the green space master plan that we're discussing this evening. So effectively, what this site plan package that you all have seen encompasses, seven roadways, 13 intersections, and then streetscapes, and something that is easily missed because you don't see it, and that's the exact intention of the way the Main Street design standards were put together, is the utility component of this. Drainage, water, sewer, reuse lines, all of that is part of this package. It's been reviewed tirelessly. Again, I think during some earlier discussions on whatever block it was, block four, block one, there were questions from some of the commissioners about, well, what is this, and where's it going to go, and how's it going to work? And again, yet another reason why we encompassed everything into this plan. I think as I was having individual meetings with all of you back in October to discuss some of this, I was able to identify and highlight a lot of the utilities and generally where they're located. But again, and really, I think the key thing to focus on as it relates to the utilities is you don't see them. That's exactly the point here with, throughout Main Street, it's going to look very different than a lot of other areas of the city. I'm sorry, I want to go back to this. One other item that we did add to this, and I know it's been a discussion point, but the stars that you see there in either blue or purple are various transit stops along the major corridors, or kind of more of that local loop that may occur as the project moves forward, and there's more local transit within the city. This is one other element that I think's important. I don't know that you've seen our phasing plan since you approved it as part of the PMDD, but it helps break down and identify the manner in which the developer plans on working its way through the project. It doesn't necessarily mean Phase 1 and Phase 2 and Phase 3 aren't going to be happening at the same time, just gives you all as a commission an idea of where we plan on starting, as we've shared with you previously, along Lyons Road, working our way to the west and to the north as we build our way through the project. The intention, as we've shared with you, and hopefully will occur at some point later this year, is to get into the ground and build all the master infrastructure first. We're going to have a conversation in just a few minutes about some of the elements that are related to the phasing plan, so I thought it was important to include here, at least for your, for you all to view and see again. And obviously, I can relate back to it again later in the presentation if you all have any specific questions. So one of the things we want to focus on is the, are the DRI requirements. And so what you see here in green are requirements long before my team showed up to the table here that go back almost two decades with regard to what were obligations for completing certain roadways in and around Main Street. What you see in yellow are those additional connections that really comport to the plan that we worked on with city staff, presented to you all, that is now our master plan essentially. And so you've got the green roadways, those are all obligations that we're moving forward and building. You've got the yellow roadways, obviously, that we're building as well. Collectively, they comprise the roadway master plan. There are all sorts of improvements, streetscapes, things of that nature. You'll see more of that in some of the cross-sections I'm going to share with you in just a few moments. Turn lane improvements, off-site improvements, those are obligations that maybe don't relate specifically to the DRI, but as part of the plating process and otherwise, we've got to make turn lane improvements along Lyons Road, along Wiles Road, internal to the project as well. And then lastly, and Mayor, I know very important to the conversations we've been having, are the signals. There's been a lot of coordination since this conversation has occurred over the course of the last several months, with, between our team, the city's team, Broward County as it relates to the signals, and so we'll talk about that in a little more detail in the presentation as well. But you can see the locations at 40th, at Cullum, and at Wiles Road. So these next handful of slides are really graphic in nature. We've taken these from the various roadway sections that were approved as part of the PMDD and really incorporated then into the specific site plan. What you see on the left-hand side, Street Type A, is probably the most prominent street type that you see in Main Street, along 40th, along City Market, up Banks, and in other areas. And so you can see a plan view and a cross-section on the screen in front of you, and it really shows you kind of from center line out, there are mirror images of one another, out to property lines, the pedestrian areas, the on-street parking areas, the planting areas, really all with the intent of ensuring that we're really creating that, that opportunity for various forms of mobility throughout Main Street, for walkability, for bicycles, for vehicles, but ensuring that there are appropriate traffic calming measures in place with narrow roadways, on-street parking, things of that nature. Street Type C is a relatively limited street type. It's still a very similar cross- It's still a very similar cross-section. You can see it in purple up on the screen. It's effectively on the north side of block 11. Just to the north of that would be the city's, what we call block 14. I think it's a portion of the city's public safety complex site. And so you can kind of get a feel for what that street type would look like along that area and then continuing a little bit further to the east along Cullum Road. So I think we've got five or six slides that we're going to run through now with the idea of really showing you six primary intersections within Main Street. We're starting here at Lyons and Cullum. And then we'll work our way to the west and show a couple of the other intersections so that the commission can get a feel for... So this is not every single segment of every single roadway, but these are kind of the highlights, really the areas that we all felt necessary to focus on. You can see a lot of the streetscape, a lot of the landscaping. Everything in blue are bike lanes. These dotted lines that we've included here, the dotted lines that are pink or purple, depending on the screen that you're looking at, are the pedestrian walkways and all of the connectivity throughout. What I want to highlight is, this is just within the rights of way, just within the streetscape areas, which is why this is the roadway master plan. You can see immediately south of Cullum, there's a number of walkways. So it's not just... This is just meant to provide... Excuse me. This is just meant to provide the areas within the roadway master plan. Everything else that you see there is either going to be part of the green space master plan when it's presented or has already been presented to you as part of the individual site planning blocks. Obviously, to make sure that we're showing you everything in context, we're sharing, obviously, the areas that are kind of more emboldened with brighter colors as part of the roadway master plan. But you've seen the vast majority of all of this already. Okay. I think this is slightly out of order, but... So we do have the intersection improvements and signal timing slide that I do want to touch on. So through the various conversations we've had, I think as recently as this morning between Chris Hagan, our traffic engineer, Michael Rigetti, I think that conversation may have taken place yesterday, but there was also correspondence and discussions with the county as recently as this morning. It is, I think, all parties' intentions and everyone's been working collectively on this to ensure that the signal at Cullum and 40th can be constructed kind of at the same time, concurrently with the construction of phase one. And so that would be the game plan to move everything forward and construct the signal while phase one is being constructed. That's when it would effectively be warranted. For Cullum and 40th, so a little bit further to the south where the commercial parcels are located, would be part of phase two. It's why I showed you the phasing plan earlier. Happy to go back to it again later. Phase two and one of the other blocks, I believe block eight, which you're going to see here shortly, comprise some residential units, which should provide the warrants for the other signal. Lastly here, the last signal that's effectively part of Main Street is all the way up at Wiles and Banks. The likelihood is that all of the build-out for Main Street would be necessary in order to warrant that signal. So that'll be a little bit later in the process, but it's all bonded for and ensured that it will be constructed by the developer, providing warrants are met. So back to some of these other slides, we move a little bit further west to Cullum and Banks. And again, just sharing, obviously, you can see everything that's in grayscale are some of the adjacent blocks. What I do want to highlight here more than anything else is the median that you see on the right side of the screen. That is one of, and again, I've got a slide a little bit later that's going to show a lot more in the form of traffic calming. It's a very significant issue that we spent a lot of time working through between creating a chicane, kind of a little movement around the median, the median itself, the on-street parking, the four-way stop condition that you see there. These are all various forms of traffic calming to ensure that the speed on Cullum Road remains at a reasonable speed, something where vehicles, even if they wanted to, couldn't really, you know, get too far without hitting some form of mechanism that's going to cause them to slow down. I'll go through that in a little bit more detail as well. Again, here, you can see all of the on-street parking, you know, everything that Justin mentioned that was part of the process of creating the PMDD and ensuring that all of these items made their way into this roadway master plan. This moves one intersection west to 54th. Currently, this is effectively the area where if you're coming down Cullum, you have that big curve that turns to the south, head to the casino. This is now one of the, I think, the westernmost intersection of what will be the Village Green. And again, the bike lanes, the pedestrian crosswalks, those will all be paved, the multi-use paths, the on-street parking, you know, this is a theme, obviously. It's exactly what the city wanted, and we're really just trying to call out and highlight these key areas for you. So moving down, so now we're moving south to 40th Street, and we'll start at Lyons and 40th as well. And I do want to spend a few moments on this particular slide because we spent, of all of the time that we've spent working through this roadway master plan, we definitely spent the most time on this area. It was complicated. It was difficult, right? You've got residential and commercial on the north side of 40th, and then you've got a large commercial area on the south side of 40th with apartments. The goal for this area was to do exactly that, but at the same time, keep it safe, keep it active. And so we spent a lot of time, and try and bring your memory back to when you approved the block two and block three site plans, on, I don't have the pointer, on some of the open plazas and areas, if you look down kind of where it says block three commercial there on the bottom right-hand side of the screen. We wanted to ensure the vibrancy and the activity that was there, but this piece of it, and in particular, what I really want to focus the commission's eyes on, is just to the left of that main intersection, right? There's nothing that we can do just as you're turning in or out of Main Street. So the intersection of 40th and Lyons is a main intersection. We need to ensure that it's going to be signalized, that it's safe, that there are pedestrian and bicycle crossings, that there are landscape medians. But we wanted to stop that vehicle field as quickly as possible. And so as soon as you move to the west of those two driveways, to the north goes into block two, to the south goes into block three, we've narrowed down the streets, right? If you look to the left there, and we provided you an example of something, this is in East Boca, near Meijner Park, a very, very similar area where we're going to have raised crosswalks, bollards, a lot of landscaping, and you know that you've entered that kind of residential field, moving your way west and really encouraging vehicles to slow down if they're not moving into the commercial area. And so I wanted to highlight that and just make sure that everyone understood. And obviously, if you have questions, we can talk through that in more detail. Just a couple more, I promise. So this is...
Wait.
I think I've got four more slides. So this is the intersection of City Market and the main plaza, essentially. It's a T-intersection. Again, all of the same features that I had mentioned earlier. We move into... So I do want to spend a moment talking about this, just so the commission's aware of it. It is part of the roadway master plan. We've discussed this previously. There's only so much right-of-way for this section of City Market south of the property that we are acquiring. What you're looking at here has Monarch Station to the west and Marbella to the east. There was dedication of right-of-way, but not enough, because I don't think Marbella ever completed its plating process, to ensure that complete street that we're providing elsewhere around Main Street. We are going to build this out to a section so that as, I'm guessing, a future developer comes in and builds the Marbella area, can complete the street so it's consistent with all of the other street sections. But I did feel like that was very important to highlight for the commission as well. These last two show just Banks Road at the north and the south sides. And I think that's... It's not moving. Oh, sorry. So I did want to highlight the traffic calming again. I know how important it's been for everyone. So really, just to kind of point out, starting at Banks and Cullum and moving our way to the east, all of the various traffic calming measures that have been put into place between the raised crosswalks, the stop conditions, the on-street parking, and then you can see the narrowed lanes, the medians, the chicanes. And then moving a little bit further to the east, you see more of the same. It's slow right now. Again, more medians, crosswalks with flashers. We did everything we could along that one stretch of straight roadway to really do what we could to calm the traffic, to slow vehicles down. And I think that there's fairly ample measures that are going to cause any driver that's coming through to ensure that they're driving at a reasonable speed. Pretty sure that's it. Yep, staff recommends approval. This one's pretty technical and straightforward. Our team is here if there are specific questions, and thank you.
Commissioner Brody's in the queue.
It's going to be a really, really long question. So I asked for one thing to be put on there.
Yep, meant to mention it. There are two things I meant to mention now that comes up. Yes, Commissioner Brody came up with a great idea that we hadn't thought of. We are going to identify a parallel space somewhere along Cullum in proximity to the Village Green and somewhere along 40th in proximity to one of the two plazas or parks, and stripe them and identify them for police parking only. So that will be part of something that gets implemented. I don't know if that needs to be a condition of approval. The other item that I did at least want to mention, it came up earlier, and Commissioner Rydell's joking about a street name, but the street names have been something that's been a topic of discussion that is not part of this application necessarily. As we've said all along, we are not looking to take real ownership in naming the streets, but we have come up with some ideas. We had shared them with staff sometime last year, our intention, and we'll continue to work with staff on this. But as we come forward and present what I would say is the more exciting of the two master plans, which is the green space master plan, it's got a lot of the amenities and other elements in it. We'll probably make that presentation at that point in time. I'm guessing that'll be late February or sometime in March, depending on how dates shake out.
And maybe ask for some community input, too. All right, is anyone else in the queue? If not, I have some comments. I appreciate this, Scott. Good designation for the police parking. And I loved what you said about the intersection improvement, signal timing at Lyons and Cullum. That will help significantly at phase one. I did have a question. What is the... I was asking the city manager, but I believe I should ask you. What's the speed on Cullum Road anticipated to be?
We'll find out in just one second. I don't know off the top of my head.
That's fine. And then on, when you were talking about the traffic calming measures at 40th and Lyons and all of the elements to make it look as if it's more pedestrian rather than vehicular, is that two lanes or one lane? Because the diagram that you had in your insert, Scott, looked like it was one lane. Am I talking to someone?
Well, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. I was still trying to get the answer to the speed limit, which I did. It will be 25 miles per hour. And then I caught the second half of your question, so if you don't mind repeating it, that would be great. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll try to find it. It was your roadway master plan, and you had an insert of what that street would look like?
40th and Lyons.
Lyons and 40th.
40th and Lyons, okay. I will go back to that. 40th and Lyons is one way, except I think at the intersection because of turn lanes.
Because you've got a... It looks like it's two-lane, but your insert showed one lane. So I'm assuming that's further into the... Okay, so it's where the crosswalk is interior.
Yeah, it's from that driveway, that intersection west, it's all one lane. Because, and that's what I was trying to explain earlier, because it's a signalized intersection, this is how it needs to be designed up until those driveways.
And then you had, I mean, I really love the medians and the pedestrian crossings, everything that has been shown. The bike barriers, are those... I mean, is that going to encumber a bicyclist? Is it going to be... Is it going to stick up enough on the road that it's going to encumber a bicyclist if they go over it?
What do you mean by bike barriers?
I don't know. In this big plan, there were listed, they had illustrations of bike barriers.
Can you talk to that?
I was just curious, because we took a lot of hits. Remember when Winston Park Boulevard west of Lyons was redone and there were some lights put on there and it was as if it were going to encumber bicyclists? And these look like they're raised pretty high.
I can help you with that.
Well, of course you can.
Good evening, Michael Rigetti, senior project manager. Thank you, members of the commission. What staff had asked for was, on Banks Road, as you're going south, it's a free-flow right, essentially, to go westbound Sample. And there's an adjacent bike lane as you transition off of the shared-use pathway and you get into this turn lane taper. And so what we were fearful of is that the driver, naturally, would be looking to the left to see the oncoming traffic. And he has an adjacent bike lane that, under normal conditions, if there was a through lane, the right turn lane would go towards the curb and the bike lane would be positioned between a through lane and a right turn lane. And in this case, there's no through lane on Banks. And so we asked for some protective devices to separate the right turn lane vehicle area from this designated bike lane so that as I'm looking left, I'm protecting a cyclist, if I'm waiting for those cars, the cyclist comes up, that I know that there's this other facility that's there. And that was the notion of those devices.
No, I'm in favor of them. I just wondered if it was going to encumber a bicyclist, but... Okay. All right. I don't have anything else. Does anyone else from the commission? No? All right. Does the applicant or city staff... Whoop, whoop. Does the applicant have any questions of city staff?
No.
Okay. Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there members of the public who'd like to speak on item 10? Okay. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Does the applicant or city staff wish to cross-examine anyone that has spoken?
We're good. Thank you, mayor.
All right. Closing remarks?
No, thank you.
Commission?
Just want to make sure that the parking places are put on as a condition for the PD.
Do we have a consensus?
Yep.
Yes.
So if I may...
Does that need to be a condition?
The part that was missed in our conversation was, that's part of the calming process, too, is having them at the intersections so that people are not flying through intersections. It also makes it that they can do their paperwork inside that area without leaving the area so that if there's an accident or anything that happens, they're able to easily move within the Main Street. So that's the reason for the parking in there, so that they can be right there where it's supposed to be.
Whether it's a... I'm sorry, I'm sorry, mayor. Whether it's a condition or not, I want to make sure we're all tracking it, right? It's something we committed to at the meeting, and so the best way for the city to track it, because what Justin was just asking me, and I don't even know the answer, Commissioner, is where exactly are we putting these? I think it's to be discussed and agreed upon as part of a final site plan, which we have to submit within the next number of days, to identify those spaces. But we want to make sure that they're in the best strategic location. I, right now, based on our conversation, don't know exactly where they would be. They'll be one on Cullum, one on 40th, somewhere in proximity to either an intersection or one of the open plazas.
Do you have an opinion, city attorney, Pyburn?
I think that we could just ask for an amendment to provide that the applicant would work with staff to specifically identify the locations for these PD striped spaces as agreed to by the applicant.
Does that require a motion for amendment?
Yes.
Wish to make the amendment?
How do you want me to phrase that?
You could say so moved.
So moved.
I'll second the amendment.
So then, city clerk Kavanaugh, can we vote on the amendment?
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riley?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. Now, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second on the item as amended.
Move the item as amended.
Second.
That was moved by Commissioner Rydell and seconded by Commissioner Wasserman. Now, city clerk Kavanaugh, would you please call a roll on item 10?
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riley?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes.
Thank you. See you soon.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Now move on to city manager report.
I'll be very brief. Just, y'all received a text from me related to some of the cyber hacking that we had going on in the last couple of weeks. The good news is, is we were already actually negotiating with a firm to do a cybersecurity audit. It was just signed at my level today, so we will be working on a cybersecurity audit to make sure that doesn't happen in the future. Staff's working related to the January 28th meeting of the county commission on the landfill. And you should be aware, and it was included in my report last night, that we had two contracts for food delivery service that were funded by the American Rescue Plan. Those agreements expired, so there are some residents that are no longer getting those services. We are continuing to reach out to them and see if we can help them with alternative services. There's an upcoming meeting related to redefining our schools on January 22nd, where we think they'll be voting finally on the configuration of Coconut Creek High School and Coconut Creek Elementary. And we are continuing to work, and I am hoping to have a meeting with Superintendent Hepburn related to Lyons Creek Middle School. They keep saying, yes, they're working on it, but the response has been, we're looking for funding. So we're going to push that along as aggressively as possible. Everything else is great. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Pyburn?
I just wanted to remind you that I sent out a copy of our charter and the recent charter amendment. Unfortunately, they're not in one document because it hasn't been codified yet, but if you have any questions, please contact me in my office. At any rate, we will be scheduling a time for you to come and meet with the Charter Review Board members to discuss your suggested changes with the board as it relates to the charter, so, in the next couple of weeks. So just take a look, and again, if you have any questions in advance, let me know, and we'll be reaching out to you to get that scheduled. Thank you.
Commissioner Rydell?
No comment.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Brody?
Two quick things. One, my appointment to the charter review could make it tonight because he is welcoming his brand-new daughter. So that's a pretty good excuse. Yeah, well, he's married here, right? Second, something came to my attention really quick about something that's probably a little bit more dear to the mayor's heart, but the women's club is hitting their 55th anniversary. It's their emerald. And I thought it would be great if we could kind of, you know, there's not very many nonprofits or organizations like that, and this is a good one, you know, it supports the women in our community. I think it'd be some way to recognize that emerald anniversary. Mayor, what do you think?
Well, we did a proclamation and a nice celebration of the 50th, which was very appropriate, and we were able to have, I think, one of the charter members get that proclamation when it started in 1970. So I'm not sure what you'd do for an emerald, but...
Yeah, well, 55 is old. I'm 55. Could we do something like that, though? Would you be okay with that, Mayor?
I'm perfect.
Okay.
Okay. Vice Mayor Riley?
Well, I want to thank everyone for their support tonight. I also want to mention that the officer that was referred to this evening has been one of the best things that's happened to the community, and I want to congratulate him on his, all his efforts. He is our Director of Security in Windmore, and like I said, he is the best thing that's happened. And I want to say thank you to our Coconut Creek Police Department for always being there for our residents, and the reputation that we enjoy because of them. Thank you very much. Stay safe out there, and happy Law Enforcement Day as well. Also, want to clarify something about the buildings in Windmore. They are not tumbling down. I can rest assured that our residents can sleep well this evening because the buildings are not in jeopardy, and our code enforcement employees do not overlook anything, especially the safety of the residents. So I just want to say, I'm sorry that everybody gets thrown under the bus. But I want to, I want to thank you for your patience and support. Thank you so much. Have a great weekend. I did go to Joe Scott's swearing-in. That was a very nice celebration for him, so he can enjoy four more years as our supervisor of elections. And I guess that's all I have. Everybody have a great weekend.
Thank you. Just a few things. Lakewood East, I just want to commend staff. I didn't get to go to the first meeting that they had, so I went last night. Didn't stay for the whole thing, but our, Michael Rigetti and the... Yes, and the consultant, that's a tough crowd, and I have to tell you, they presented very adequately a lot of viable alternatives, or not, whatever they chose to do, and they took a second survey. I don't know what the results were, but they went out there on weekends and solicited door-to-door opinions of the residents. I didn't even know that our staff did that. I thought that was quite commendable. And Sprouts is going to have their hiring clinic here in the community center, I understand, on, rather than using this Cypress, or Row Center, excuse me, rather than using the Sheridan over on Cypress Creek, which I thought was good, because Mr. Sinclair last year told Sheila and I that he wanted to do some things locally. And it's wonderful to see that they actually are going to do much of what they said, plus work with the special needs community to hire. And, because they, the store manager that they have in Deerfield Beach is the one that they plan to put here, and he already works with the Parkland Buddies over in his Deerfield Beach store, and he plans to do something similar here. So that was, that was good news, because we have a lot of special population that can use the gainful employment. And I got there a little early, and I'm glad I did, because I don't pickleball, but for those of you that do, they had a glow-in-the-dark pickleball going on in the gym, and it is amazing. Now, there's a team builder for you. Ideas? No? Josh is not excited. So we'll move on.
You're not excited for me this evening. I apologize.
I know you've got plans and things to do, but anyway, I just want to thank everyone for their indulgence this evening and for your support in gaining some decorum here in conducting business. So, thank you and good night.
Move to adjourn.